But, that's what the calculation is. So, it's not really nickel and dime kind of thing that we're talking about.
Carl, did you move?
You just said if the state hasn't really firmed up their complete position as to, because they're redeveloping it right now.
The state's done their plan, Carl. They have adopted their plan. The state's is up to date.
They're done.
It's the regional plan.
The regional plan.
And because we had that merger of Midstate and Riverco.
Alvin North, yeah.
They're a little behind.
Alright, so that should be done in the next two years?
Susan, do you know where they're at in the plan?
What they told us is that while they are working on their regional plan, their executive director isn't there right now, so they're getting a new one. And they said that the state has said, "Keep working on it, but towns, don't wait around for them." Your rule is that you keep up to date your plan of conservation and development in concert with the state of Connecticut. The regional plan is an adjunct. It's something that helps, but in terms of requirements and making sure that certain areas are conserved, as Deanna pointed out, and other areas that can be developed are developed. They want us to be in concert with the up-to-date state plan of conservation and development.
Can we do that with the two years that we're talking about here?
That's...
And keep it at that, and at that time, look at a five-year plan. And that way, you know where the state will be going, where the region will be going, where...
Kind of what we're gonna do.
You know, so why go out ten years? Why not just go out...
You have to adopt a plan that will cover ten years.
Yes. You have to have that one.
That's phase one, is a ten-year plan.
You have to have a ten...
But you can amend it, Carl, as you go along. Yes, you can.
Right.
But you want to send into them an up-to-date plan. So, in other words, there's, let's say theoretically, twenty, forty things that we said we were gonna do in the plan. So, we go through it, through this process, and we point out, "Well, we've already done," I don't know, pick a number, "thirty-two of them." So, those thirty-two things have been accomplished, but because those have been accomplished, there's another group of two dozen things that we should be working on.
Okay.
So, those then would be stated. And the next, when you finish that, you send it to the state, saying, "We've done our due diligence, we're up to date with your plan of conservation and development, and we've done our due diligence here in the town, and our plan is up to date." And it's typically for a ten-year period.
She's right.
Carl, they want you to look at your community long-term.
No, I understand that, too. I understand, and that's why I was asking if there was a...
Some states do twenty-year plans. They require that the communities come up with twenty-year plans.
Really?
Yeah, and that's, you know, and that's a really long vision ahead, you know? Ten years, you know, we have accomplished a lot in ten, you know, really in ten years. There's a lot of things we can check off, and there's things that are still there that we need to do, that there are money, there's money reasons we haven't done them, or they're so complicated, or we took small steps, like the Planning and Zoning Commission, it was about a village district. It said, "Adopt a village district," or recommended that, and it was a larger area. It encompassed all of the B-3, it encompassed almost to the town hall, you know, all that was in it, and the commission went, "You know what? We're not gonna, we're not gonna do that. We're gonna adopt a village district that's smaller." So, there, you know, and that's something they review again. Do they continue to think about having a bigger village district, or do they, you know? Those are the things that they have to... So, they can, it's a, it's your guiding tool also when you're making decisions for regulations. If the commission's making a regulation change, they need to find support in the plan to make that regulation change. If it's not anywhere supported in there, technically, they should not be making that regulation change, because it's the guiding document.
Fred?
Well, I had two points. First is being one section of this particular plan, which is defer to the one we have in place now. And I'm just thinking about it. Explore opportunities for Elmcrest Site. Now, all of us in this room, I think, have spent an awful lot of time in the past dealing with that site, and there are also a whole lot of folks that are still interested, very interested in that site. This one topic alone is gonna, there's gonna be a tremendous amount of community interest and input, and you're talking about hours and hours, and this is one, just one item.
I agree.
And there's multiple, there's multiple problems with that site, as we're aware, with development of the site. And so, I, you know, I can, as far as the community being involved, I think there's gonna be plenty of items in the existing document that, as we revisit, plus new ones, that there'd be a tremendous amount of interest in. And you've got groups in town who are, have become active and would like to see things happen, and you're gonna, we're gonna hear from them.
I agree.
And then, the second part of that is, in reference to the funding for this, Susan, getting back, where would that, although I'd rather fund it forty thousand, if there's a motion for twenty, I would support that also, but how would that work?
You'd have to take it out of contingency at this point. As Tom pointed out during his budget report, we've spent three thousand, two hundred dollars out of the one hundred thousand that's in contingency. So, that's the only place that this, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom?
Yeah.
And if you're going to correct me, we wanna hear it. You can either use one of these mics or come up to the front. You know, we can use one of these mics in the audience, too, if you prefer to sit when you're talking.
Well, what you said was correct. What, if the numbers, there's two numbers passed around, if the number was twenty thousand than, that you're looking for in total, that looks like, to me, you would take fourteen thousand out of contingency and move that into the Plan Consultant Line item in the Planning Department, Planning and Development, which has six thousand. That would give you a total of twenty thousand dollars at the current time to attempt to complete, you know, a portion of that task, pending no other need for a Plan Consultant for the year, for any other reason. But, that's what that would do. Otherwise, if it was a different amount, it would be the same type of thing, a smaller, lower number from the oh ninety-five contingency department into Department Forty, Account Three, One, Zero, Zero, Two, Plan Consultant.
Thank you. So, that's how we would do it.
That's how it would be. So, we have six thousand already dedicated from last year?
Yeah.
That's sitting there.
Well, the six thousand is in this year's budget, yes.
Right.
But what you had said to the commission was, "From last year's budget, we're not gonna, we can't carry over within the general fund operating budget, but we would grant it to you from contingency after July one." So, rather, you're stating you will potentially grant fourteen thousand out of contingency. That then goes to the six thousand that's already been budgeted, which is a total of twenty thousand. Is there a motion to that effect?
That'd be good for two years, for the plan.
No, the money is not good for two years.
No, no, the plan. What we're looking at doing...
That's what we're hoping to do.
We're guessing, we could find out, we could find out exactly what a firm would charge for the twenty thousand dollars. I'm saying twenty. It might be less than that, it might be more than that, but I'm guessing it would be about that.
That would be your upper limit, essentially, Bruce.
Yeah, so we're talking, you are talking about, not me, I'm listening, about twenty thousand this year and twenty thousand next year, this fiscal year, next fiscal year.
Wow.
I don't know about next year. We haven't talked about that. Let's finish with this year.
Let's finish with this year.
I respect that.
Well, whether we give you twenty-two cents or two million dollars, this needs to be updated, right?
Yes.
So, one way or another, it needs to get updated, correct?
Yes.
Yes. See, what I...
So, is there a motion to allocate fourteen thousand, or twelve thousand, or no thousand from contingencies? What's the pleasure?
I'll move twenty thousand.
I'm sorry?
I'll move twenty thousand.
Fourteen, right.
Well, the fourteen from contingency, but the total will end up being twenty thousand.
The total, yes. So, Sharon, what he's saying is, what Fred is saying is that his motion would be fourteen thousand from contingency, added to six thousand.
From last year's budget.
No, no, no. Fourteen thousand from contingency, and that would be added, Sharon, to the six thousand that is currently in the planning, is it the Planning and Zoning Budget?
No, it's in the Planning Department.
Planning Department.
Consultant line item.
Consultant line item. For a total of twenty thousand dollars.
The exact name of that Planning Department is Planning and Development.
Could you please tell Sharon?
The exact name of that Planning Department is Planning and Development.
Line item?
It's Thirty-One.
It's very hard to hear you up here, Tom, I'm sorry.
Three, One, Zero, Zero, Two, Plan Consultant.
Got it.
The contingency, there's one line item, so that's fine if you say you need...
Okay, is there a second? To the motion? I'll second. Okay. Discussion?
So, can I ask, is the twenty thousand dollars going to be helpful in updating the plan in the next two years, or is it just a total waste? You're better off with no money.
It's a total waste. They're asking you to do it. Of course it's gonna be...
Well, I'm hearing different, I'm hearing different things from you. You were saying, you know, if we do it incrementally, it's not gonna be quality, et cetera, et cetera, so...
No, no. I was talking about six thousand dollars when I said that. Twenty thousand dollars is halfway there. We can start the process. We can hire a consultant who is good at his or her job. But you need to understand that it probably will not be enough to completely do all the work that's required to do this plan, so the next fiscal year, we will ask for some more money for a plan that has to be completed by March of 2016.
And if you don't get the money, will the plan be updated by 2016?
If we get no money, the answer is...
If you get twenty, and you don't get any next year for whatever it's gonna do.
Well, I'm gonna tell you that I'm gonna work with Deanna and finance, and we're gonna do our best to spend the money as carefully as possible to complete the plan.
Absolutely.
That's what we're gonna do.
I mean, that's fine, but, I mean, if you're saying that, you know, I just hear it kind of from both sides, so if you're saying that you need to have forty to actually do it correctly, then, then, then why don't we just give it to you now instead of breaking it up two years? I mean, that's, you know...
Because there's a motion on the table, and because we only have a certain amount of money in contingency, and your operating fund is separate from your capital fund.
I'm not suggesting that we give forty thousand dollars.
Well, I thought you were. So, I was, I was answering you.
I am not, I'm just trying to...
Because, Brian, typically, this would be in your, in your long-range capital, which carries over every year. So, just from a fiscal point of view, the twenty thousand, if it's gonna be spent, it's gotta be done this year. Otherwise, it disappears. Remember that. So, that's why you don't wanna put forty thousand in the operating line item, because if you can't spend it, because it's a two-year project, you got, you've gotta get it done, first of all. And I, I want to work as closely as possible and give as much support as I can to the Planning and Planning and Zoning Commission, so that we get this done. You didn't get very much at budget time, so we're trying to work within the budget that was passed, and there's a motion on the table, and if there's any other discussion by the selectmen, I'll entertain it. Otherwise, I'm gonna call the question.
Not to you.
I didn't know if it was gonna be the answer, but I...
I would like an answer, though. I mean, so I understand, you're telling me it's gonna get done, but I'm trying to understand from them whether it's gonna get done with twenty grand.
I think with twenty grand, we, the Planning and Zoning Commission and myself can get work done, and gets considerable work done with that amount of money. And I think knowing that maybe, you know, I don't know, maybe the following year, we may need a little, but I don't think there necessarily has to be another twenty thousand. I think we can get a lot done with that and see where we're at. And again, I can do some of the scoping things, you know, in reaching out to the public with some meetings that we can have, the consultant there, and others that we don't, so I think that we can get a lot done, and I would appreciate that. That would be very helpful.
Also, the answer's no.
The answer's no, that we couldn't get it completed?
Right.
I don't know if we can, but I think, I think we can, there's a possibility that we can.
You're asking us, see, we haven't priced it yet for, for, asked consult, so you're asking me to give you a firm price when we don't know what that is yet?
I just find it odd that we're throwing numbers around as opposed to actually going out and getting some sort of quote, but...
Well, we did. I have, Brian, I have contacted several different firms, and actually, the firm that we worked with previously, and they said, you know, they give you a roundabout. They're not gonna be tied down without you, you know, actually going out for it. They're like, "Yeah, between thirty and forty." So, then we went to the Regional Planning Agency and asked them, "What is it? Between thirty and forty?" You know, the planning agency said forty, I think they said.
Right.
And they're, and they're ones that we were hoping to do some of it for us as part of our fees, and that's, and they're still wanting for it. So, that's why it's hard to gauge it, because, you know, I'm trying to gauge a private consultant against doing it with an agency that we work with, and if the agency is saying forty, it's hard to gauge with the private consultant with. But Planometrics, I can't speak for many other firms, they worked with us before, and they would like to work with us again. So, maybe, you know, knowing that there's someone we worked with ten years ago, and they've done a lot of the plan, and that, and for them, not saying that they would get it, because we go to RQ, but if they got it, they have the format of that plan. That, they, you know, a lot of that is already created, you know what I'm trying to say? So, for them, they might be able to give a better price because they already have that format. So, I think that we could get a lot done in twenty thousand. Thank you.
And this will be enough so that we won't jeopardize any grants, loans, something like that would be in compliance enough for the next two years?
That's up to the state, you know?
Well, you're good for the next two years anyway.
Yes, but Carl, you would, you would get the plan accepted, because once the work is done, and then OPM reviews it, then P&amp;Z reviews it, then you review it as the Board of Selectmen, and then it goes, goes for a vote to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, there's, there's not just the writing, but as you know, there's the adoption.
And Planometrics is, you like to use, and those people you said?
Well, this is the front of this pool.
Right. Now, they also did the village district, didn't they?
No, no. Planometrics, Planometrics was the planning consultant, and the village district is in the plan to do, but when we actually, the commission adopted the village district, we had to have a design consultant, and the design consultant, we've had actually two different design consultants. The first one was Aristolus and David, I'm gonna go blank right now, his last name, I apologize. He was an architect, and those two were together. They were the village district consultant. Then, the next consultant that we have is, is CR3, which is Jeff Gibrian, and then we also have the Regional Planning Agency, which actually does some of the very simple signs. So, they, but they didn't, they didn't adopt the plan, or they, they just were the consultant. Part of, part of the regulation says you have to have, and the state statute says when you have a village district, an architectural review has to happen. But the Planning and Zoning Commission are the ones that determine with the public about making the downtown a walkable and more attractive, you know, with doing the architectural review. So, that wasn't the plan.
Good question. Any other questions? Are you ready for the question? All in favor of the motion as presented? All say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Aye. Unanimous passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is appointments to boards and commissions, and I have one suggestion tonight, and that is, the Portland Housing Authority has one position...
It's number nine, right?
Well, I'm sorry, I did, yes. So, I guess I can't do the appointments to boards and commissions yet. I have to go back to nine. Alright, we'll go back to nine. I thought that we had covered it, because we talked so much. But we didn't. Do you, alright. Can I just make my, my motion for the Portland Housing Authority? Would you indulge me?
Sure.
Okay. It's Edward Banning, B-A-N-N-I-N-G, and he was, actually, they had a little election, and he was selected. So, with your indulgence, I'll make that motion. Is there a second to that? Second by Brian, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions?
Who's second?
Brian.
I have one question.
Sure.
As an alternate to the Clean Energy Task Force, Cephas, C-E-P-H-A-S-K. Where was it again? C-E-P-H-A-S is the first name, middle initial K, and last name Ocansey, O-C-A-N-S-E-Y. As an alternate to the Clean Energy Task Force.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. And there's just one other item on that particular line, and that is, I made an appointment today for the Emergency Management Director, and that would be David, last name Blais, B-L-A-I-S. The previous person, Noel Garrett, had resigned, effective July one. Now, we're gonna go to nine, which is the Route Seventeen Recreational Park update. In your packets, I gave you copies of, first, the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from July twenty-three, and you'll see at the bottom of page one, after a view of information, the selectmen requested the following additional information. The town's entire debt schedule service, schedule, which is in your packets toward the end. It is this document, which we will go over in a few minutes. You asked for a review of the cost estimates of the project, which has not been accomplished as yet by the consulting engineers. You asked for a review of the estimated percentages for borrowing by the town, which Tom will have a comment on in a few minutes. And then, in the back, next page two, you asked for the town's current and projected debt, as would be reasonable based on sound financial management, and that's also in this packet that I showed you. A projected plan of how we would maintain the new park, that is not available yet. The current schedule of use of our fields and parks, and that is included in your packet, and that looks like this. The entire five-year capital plan for the town, which is this document, which we'll go over in a minute. And the last further explanation of financing options, including grants, which I have a brief verbal report on that. We spoke with the Office of Policy and Management, and we also spoke with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. There may be opportunities for grants, and I will be sending to the Office of Policy and Management a brief narrative of the project, the Route Seventeen project, along with the most current draft of the map. There may be some dollars in addition to steep that they have available, so they will be looking at this as a consideration. So, going back to the first document that I referred to, which says at the front, Connecticut General Statute's Schedule of Debt Limitation, the auditors every year go through our current debt, and they look at the capacity of borrowing, which they state at the bottom of this document. And you'll see, there's a fairly large number that they identify as total capacity of the town's borrowing of over a hundred and seventy-three million dollars. The town, as of June thirty, two thousand thirteen, had debt totaling sixteen million four hundred sixty-three thousand forty dollars, leaving a margin for borrowing, according to their calculations and the abilities as established by state statute, of a hundred and fifty-six million nine hundred thirty-one thousand five hundred ten dollars. So, we are nowhere near our capacity, as you can see, and that's an answer to that question. The next page, the long-term obligations that you already have made as the town, shows the charts here of the bonds payable and other liabilities that we have. And then, toward the bottom of that page, for your review, it identifies the bonds payable that we have from general obligation bonds, as well as the refunding bonds that you did last year, as well as notes payable, that includes USDA rural development, clean water, drinking water, and so forth. And on the second page, it actually shows the annual debt service requirements to maturity on general obligation bonds and notes payable, as follows, in this chart that you see in front of you, and they start with year twenty-fourteen, and they take your schedule for principal and interest for the bonds and the notes payable through two thousand thirty-two. And then, there's some narrative in there in terms of debt. And the last page talks about the capital leases that you had allocated as of June thirty, and you do know that you also allocated a five-year lease this past year. Any questions on that? The next item that I wanted to share with you is the, what you adopted as the Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year fifteen through nineteen, and you'll see the various departments are identified here on page one thirty-seven. The departments would include Board of Education, Building Planning, Emergency Management, Fire Department, Grounds Maintenance, Library, Parks and Recreation, Police Department, Public Works, Resource Recovery, Sewer Department, Townwide Improvements, and Water Department. Those are the only ones that are at least identified here. There would be others as well. But within this five-year plan, you can see there's projected needs for Brownstone School, Gildersleeve, the high school, system-wide improvements. And then, moving on to page one thirty-eight, a review of Valley View School. You can see that there was, within this plan of capital improvement, an allocation for the Plan of Conservation and Development for next year, as well as other items within building and planning departments. Within the Fire Department, you have purchased a new fire truck this year, and you'll see that's reflected in year twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, and they project out for the rest of the years there. Grounds Maintenance, we did replace the dump truck this year, and Tom, the mower? Yes.
Not in grounds.
That's...
Not in grounds.
Not in grounds. It was actually a Public Works mower.
Right.
Right. And then, if you move on to the library, there are some improvements in those categories within Parks and Recreation. There is additional improvements listed there. The Route Seventeen project is not listed in this per se, so that this plan does not include all of your items. Then, the Police Department, there was cruiser replacements made this year. There will be, I should say, there will be. There will be a new generator at Town Hall under Building Maintenance, a new Building Maintenance pickup truck, and municipal parking lot improvements would be projected. And then, you can see, over the course of the next several years, additional building maintenance in terms of library carpet replacement, roof at the senior center, storage building for Public Works, various window replacements. Again, parking lot improvements are every year, pretty much. Masonry repairs and furnaces in the various buildings that are on a rotating basis. And then, within the Highway Division, this year, you... And then within the Highway Division, this year, you made substantial improvements to our fleet in terms of mechanics truck, crew leaders pickup, tractor, mower, as well as dump truck replacements, and so forth. Townwide improvements include computer improvements, revaluation, there's an allocation for that every year. And then within the Water and Sewer Divisions, there are maintaining items here, but not the large ticket, which would be expansion and/or major replacements, which would be done likely with grants and other bonded indebtedness. So the two big items that wouldn't be in here would be those types of projects that would be considered special projects, such as road replacements and/or water and sewer improvements in the infrastructure. And then the last item that I wanted to review with you briefly has to do with the schedules of usage. Someone had asked, what are our parks and what do we do with them? And you can see, within the fall schedule, Camp Ingersoll Number One and Number Two soccer fields are used. The high school JV soccer game, soccer field is used for games, excuse me. The baseball field is closed for renovations at the high school. Leroy Dyer is the high school field. High school softball infield only. Practice on the soccer fields at the high school. Games at Agalati Field, as well as football practices that would be during the week. Soccer is also played on that Agalati Field. And then Middlesex softball, Middlesex Upper Fields, football uses that for practice. At the Brownstone Park at Nolan Field, baseball and softball would be there. Soccer is at the Lou Majori Field at Bransfield Park. Baseball at the John Kozminski Field at Bransfield Park. Baseball at Tomaso Field, and soccer is played at Valley View. Moving right along to spring. Again, this Ingersoll One and Ingersoll Two, both of those would be soccer. Gilder Sleeve Upper uses it for soccer practice. High school tennis, high school baseball, high school softball, high school soccer. North and South Fields are utilized. The North Field being closed in the spring for rest. Agalati Field is used. Middlesex softball, Middlesex Upper, Nolan Field for men's league games. And then the various fields at Bransfield Park, Lou Majori. The batting cages are used at Bransfield Park for Little League practice. Kozminski Field is used for, not just Portland, but I guess the outside field. Xavier plays there, too. There is a garden at Bransfield Park, and they start planting the community garden. Horseshoes are at Bransfield Park. Tomaso Field, Valley View, Veterans Park has T-ball. And the Town Green has plant sales and other activities that occur. Spring is a busy time. And then within the summer. Again, drop-in soccer at Camp Ingersoll in the summer. Men over 30 basketball courts on Main Street. The high school tennis courts, there's a Skyhawks tennis there. And the U.S. Tennis Association is at the tennis courts in the summertime. Baseball games, softball games, and so forth. The Brownstone, I mean, the Bransfield Park Fields, Tomaso Field, Town Green, Valley View, and so forth. So these fields get a lot of use, and as you know, not all of those are owned by us. So this is in addition to the information that we talked about last time, which included the probable costs for the project, as well as the bonding numbers. And Tom was going to give us just an update on the bond percentage, if you would, Tom. I don't know if you have anything to add to that tonight or not.
The only comment I'll make on the bonding percentage was, I think what we utilized in the estimate to run those was a 4%. The reason, the rationale for that was, you're gonna, you know, this probably is a phased project for a three or so-year period, and you really don't know what the effective, the rates of interest would be over that period of time. So right now, you know, you might get a little bit better of a rate of return if you want to not write this minute. But, you know, when, at the time you probably finalized the bond, you don't know. So it was just, we thought it was a conservative number to use, and hopefully, if it's done more than that. That's what we used for that. And I think short-term, we were using maybe like a, if you did something for a five-year, I think we were using a two and a half or something. But I don't know how, you know, much people are interested in the short-term on a project. Still think the four, you know, I think the four is reasonable at this point to look at, so I think that's, you know, use that now.
Thank you, Tom. Discussion?
I got a thought here, I don't know if Tom might have had the information, but is there some rough idea of what bonding costs? The relationship between bonding costs and mill rate? This is our, every $5 million, or what? Is it approximately, it has some impact at some point? Is there any way to look at that or not?
Was it usually about eight hundred thousand? So every, you know, if you look at your, if you look at your expense, you know, you have the information scheduled to be defined here. I think last time you guys got that. So if you were to look at that, if you're, you know, if you're hitting about 800 or so thousand in the expense, you're hitting a mill a time. So, a year, so if you're, if your annual cost is 400,000, you know, probably even half of the whole time.
And that would be for, or what number bonding, that would be for?
Just, you know, depending on the numbers that you had in front of you, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
If you're over a 20-year period, I mean, if it's a flat, 400,000, or whatever that you're at. Again, I'm talking just round numbers.
Yeah.
We're not gonna, we're not picking up his, on the mics. I'm not going to be able to hear you on the tape, unfortunately. But last time we did hand out, at 4%, Fred, for example, if you borrowed 5.5 million, your annual payment for 20 years, every year, is 400, we'll say round numbers, $405,000. So that's about a half a mil added to...
Whatever.
Yes.
Okay.
And what was the total amount, Susan, for the bonding?
For that one that I just quoted, Carl, it would be 5.5 million. Now, if the interest rate is less, your payment is less. If the interest rate is more, your payment is higher. And the... Which you would know, yeah. And I had handed these out last time. So is there any additional items you would like, or any additional action you would like to take? I know, one thing that I think is important, and I, I know that the committee has done some talking of it, and that is a phased approach to this project. And how we can phase this project as opposed to all at, all at once. So that's something that I'll be talking with our consultant. So I think that's important, myself. I don't know what you think.
Is there some sense of which of the proposals people are willing to take a look at? I know, I personally would go for the light one, I'm not going to look at the other.
The which one?
The light one, the lighter one, the five, five-four.
The five million?
Yeah, I, I think if, you know, I don't know, I would just think if people, if there's a consensus on that, at least we could eliminate.
Well, some of the eliminations there made sense, Fred, and some of them don't make sense. I mean, and some of the eliminations, such as not having an artificial turf field, I mean, that's something for us to consider. That's sizable, that's a million dollars. But when you look at eliminating bleachers, or, or some of the other things that you just need, you really have to look at that again, I think. And maybe other things are too high. I think that's why you had asked that, that we'd take another look at the estimate, which we can do. But as we've done projects in the past, except for schools, we typically do things as we can carefully afford them. So there's a minimal impact to the mill rate, and a maximum return for, for people's health and welfare in the town. Right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to remember what the downsized proposal was, in terms of maximizing things. My recollection is, is that they were including some fields and a lot of other stuff. Or to me, if you're gonna do it, it would make more sense to maximize the playing fields, as opposed to, but I don't have it in front of me, I apologize, but...
No, but I know what you're talking about. You mean, as opposed to the splash pad and some of the other?
Whatever else, sure.
Well, perhaps what you'd like to do is review some of the materials that you've received.
I think we need you to, and the numbers seemed really out of whack to me, I think to everyone.
I, I wanted to bring you this information because if you were going to put something on the ballot in November, there's not a lot of time to get all these answers. There's just physically not a lot of time. I, I can't tell you that I'll have something ready for you with the excellent questions that you have. So I don't want to mislead you and tell you that we can get this done, because I don't, we don't do work that's not complete. So we have to be careful.
We might not have time to put this on the ballot. I think this is such a big amount of money. And, and to be looking for our residents to take on this kind of a debt with the bonding, I think we have to have our numbers a lot tighter.
Yes, I agree.
I think, I think we could put it on next years and tighten this up and be working on, on the, on the fields possibly. And we could be doing work towards the goal. I think what we've heard in the last couple of weeks, or last couple of meetings, you know, just, just, just the grading and leveling up there that we could be doing, and that would be taking money right off the, this bonding issue, where I think now we don't have any place to put the dirt, and there's low spots, Rick has low dirt all the time to be loading. We should be taking that dirt and be putting it up there, and a year from now, you know, a little grading and getting it done, and see what happens next year. I, I just think it's, with the economy and as to the times, that I think this is just a lot of money to be wanting. I, it's a great wish list, I'd love to see it all, but, you know, whether or not...
There's a lot of other wishes.
A lot of other wishes, with the, you know, we also have some other big capital improvements that need to be addressed. I mean, we have our water, we have our sewer, those expenditures are very high, and I just, you know, unless these numbers are right there, and it's like, such a, like...
Yeah, and there's the very practical sense of time. We don't have a lot of time.
Time.
So I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay.
I will, I've kept the committee informed. I told them that we were meeting tonight, that I was sharing financial information, and that we still don't have any definitive word on grant opportunities, but we're exploring them. Now that we're getting closer to what they call a shovel-ready project, we can begin to look into where we might be able to get some funding and how we can fund the project. Anything else on that? I know the committee is meeting a week from tomorrow, so they may have another report for us at an upcoming meeting. I think we're ready to move on to number 11, refunds of excess payments. Who would like to do the honors?
I move to town refund the following sums, 5562 into 8898 to Stephen R. and Donna D. DuTo.
Second.
Second by, Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
And 2004 7425 to Sharon Ryan.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. I do not have anything under Status and Committee Report since we had a sizable amount of information from our committees previously. Any public comment? Yes.
Speaking as Richard Kelsey, 188 Great Hill Road, and it relates to the discussion about bonding for the Route 17 park. I had spoken a few meetings ago, and I'd asked that you, the board, not only consider the park, but if we're going to go to bond, we've had some discussions and debates about other projects. And we talk about priorities, and you do obviously know what they are. I had just listed a couple that you might, if you're going to be considering a bond of some number, 5 million. There's a bonding cost obviously associated with it that pretty much stays fixed within a range. And just to mention a couple of the priorities that we have collectively. I know we talk a lot about extending our water and sewer out to the intersection of 17 and 66, and I threw out a number that might be in the range of 5 million. And I know that we've talked at length about our road improvement projects, and not chip sealing and going into road reconstruction and renovations. And we talked, for example, about Brownstone Avenue, to the tune of maybe a million and a half or two. And we talked a little bit about the old Marlboro Turnpike would be a good candidate road for, if we stop chip sealing per se. And we decided we were going to get into a little more of a sophisticated improvement. And we talked there, I think it was a $3 million number. So hopefully, and there's a lot of other needs, I know Company Three's looking at a firehouse. And we were talking about many other improvements, and I guess it all comes down to priority for you, the board, and how much you feel the residents can bear, and I guess we're talking about a half a mil possibly for a 5.5 million dollar park. As you debate this, and as you go forward with considering bonding, again, I asked you to please consider some of the other, what you consider priorities, what I consider necessities. Your infrastructure, your road infrastructure, your water and sewer system, I consider necessities. So as you go forward as a resident, I ask that you would consider possibly bonding for those also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Informal discussion? Follow-up items? I don't have any. I will now say that we'll go into executive session for the purposes of pending litigation. And we do have a guest tonight that will be meeting with us. Attorney, could you state your name, please, for the record?
Emily Cosentino from Howdville.
She, you're gonna have to spell that.
My last name is Cosentino, C-O-S-E-N-T-I-N-O. E-N-T-I-N-O. From Howd, H-O-W-D, and Budore. From Howd, H-O-W-D, and Rudor, O-U-R-F.
Thank you. And we'll note that the time is 9:30. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Brian, seconded by Kathy. Are you staying, Rick?
No.
Yes, Rick Kelsey will stay.